All right, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us for our May 4th County Commissioner briefing meeting. Let's, let me ask if there are any questions about any items on the agenda for the briefing meeting or any items that any commissioner would like to add to discuss during the briefing meeting? Are there any questions about any items on the agenda for our regular meeting at 5:00 or any changes to the agenda?
For our regular meeting at 5:00, I'd like to propose, if we have unanimous support, that we add a proclamation honoring pro bono celebration day to recognize pro bono legal services provided in Buncombe County.
Okay, are there any objections to adding that to the agenda? Okay, then by consent, we're going to add the pro bono celebration day to the agenda and why don't we plan on taking that up during the presentation section of the agenda? That's okay? Maybe we'll do that after we recognize the National Nurses Week proclamation. We'll do it after that. So remind me if I forget. Okay, great. Then let's move on to the staff updates and the first is going to be an update on COVID-19 and vaccination work in Buncombe County and Stacy Saunders is going to present this item.
Great. It's a good afternoon and thank you for having me again. As of today, we've had 17,3531 confirmed COVID-19 cases identified in Buncombe County. And we've experienced a total of 314 COVID-related deaths in our community and actually we went about two weeks without experiencing a new death. Just added that new one today. So just remembering all 314 of those folks who were our neighbors in our community. We did see a drop in new cases per 100,000 per week since the previous week and as of today, the incidence rate was about 82 per 100,000 per week. We continue to see about 30 new cases on average per day enter the public health workflow and that's been consistent now for about two weeks. And though we saw an uptick in cases over the last two weeks, we did see a bit of stabilization in our Epi curve again. You might remember me saying we saw just the slightest bit of uptick in new cases and are starting to see that stabilize and flatten out again and seeing a potential dip in cases over the last few days. But overall, you can see that tail end of the Epi curve is overall fairly flat and hasn't changed much in the last several weeks. And after spending several weeks in that 4.0 to 4.5% range for the percent positivity, we actually saw that dip a little bit as well. And today it is at 3.6 and it's been there for the last couple of days. This is encouraging, particularly as we saw weekly testing numbers just rise just a little bit, but overall stable for those weekly testing numbers. Our hospitalizations, again, as the region, this is the 18 county region, continue to stay fairly low. And here we're showing our weekly metrics and these metrics continue to show overall favorability and instability over time. Our new cases per 100,000, as I mentioned earlier, these are always pulled on the Monday. So you heard me say today it was 82. So these numbers are as of yesterday so that we can compare week to week. And you can see there it said 83, which was actually a decrease from the week before. As I mentioned, the percent positivity has decreased as well from last week. Testing numbers increased just slightly from last week. And we, from Monday to Monday, we had not experienced a new COVID-related death and so you'll see a zero there and the local hospital data remains stable. So for about a month now, our indicators have been mostly stable and overall plateauing in new cases and a slight decrease in our percent positivity. And this is good news, but while it's good news, we still do have a lot of work to do to protect ourselves and our community. And each vaccine means that we are closer to controlling the virus. Each vaccine means that we are closer to doing many of the things that we've missed in the last year. And each one is a step toward recovering our economies, restoring our normal lives and reviving our communities. So I just want to remind folks with that, that please be sure to get your vaccine. We do have available appointments through our site, which is Buncombe County HHS site at AB Tech, which is on Ferniehurst Drive. In addition to being able to schedule an appointment on buncomeredy.org, we have walk-in availability that we started last week. And that has been moderately successful as well, which I'll talk about soon. And if our site is not as convenient to you, it doesn't matter if you come to us, we just want you to get your vaccine. So if we're not the most convenient site for you, please visit myspot.nc.gov to find a provider nearest to you and nearest to your home and your neighborhood. There are several locations in Buncombe County, including community health centers and many pharmacies that are located in grocery stores that we might frequent very often. And if you are somebody who has already received your vaccine, I do want to say thank you for doing your part to beat COVID-19. Please share your story with your friends and families and coworkers and encourage them to learn more about how to get their own vaccine. We do have plenty of vaccine now across the state, so everyone has a spot and it is now, so please don't hesitate. Please come and either see us or see one of our other partners. Governor Cooper announced recently that he will be looking to lift many other restrictions by June 1st. And this is based on the desire of folks to get vaccinated, that hard work of vaccine providers as well that we've been doing across the state to vaccinate North Carolinians. He further stated that he is considering lifting even the mask mandate when our state reaches that 2/3 of population, adult population, receiving at least one dose of vaccine. And this, this is the threshold that the state has set for us to see that dampening of new cases and really getting to a control place with COVID-19, as the governor said, beginning to live with the virus. And North Carolina as a whole is just at 50% of adults having received at least one vaccine. It's just, just a decimal point or so underneath 50% at this point. And so how are we doing as Buncombe County? First, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services provides that percent partially vaccinated in lots of different stratifications statewide for the state picture. And one of those being 18 years and older, so that adult population, it does not yet allow us to see that at a county level for only 18 years old and up. And so the county level data that we see is for our total population. I do want to make sure that you're aware of that. But with that said, almost 47% of Buncombe County population has been at least partially vaccinated. So well on our way to reaching that 50% that the, that the state is at as well, and that's total population versus just adult. And this is 121,346 individuals that have done their part to protect themselves, their families, their friends, their coworkers, their neighbors. They are even protecting folks they have never met and this is an amazing gift that each one of those folks is doing for our community. I did want to share the demand curve again. We modified this slightly from the last time you saw it to better represent the transition from waitlist to scheduling to what the actual first doses given are. And so you can clearly see that the demand has waned over time and in the last two weeks, we are seeing about 1,000 first doses administered each week. And that's quite a big decrease from our early days, as you can see here, where we are hitting a peak around 4,000. We did begin providing walk-in availability beginning April 28th. That was just last week. This has proven to be successful in the first week offered and has added anywhere from 20 to 40% of first doses administered from day to day. So was very desirable for our, our community. Again, I want to encourage folks to come get your vaccine. We do have one waiting for you at AB Tech. But if you'd rather get one at a local, another local provider, they've got one waiting for you as well and that makes us just as happy. And as I reported last time, we are consolidating our first and second sites into one site beginning May 10th. So our second dose site at Biltmore Church will be transitioning this week. May 6th will be its last, its, its last week. So I did want to just take a moment to say that we are thankful for our partners at Biltmore Church for their generous offer of the space that allowed us to be so successful in that second dose site. And also very thankful to fire department staff and others who have been helping to administer those second doses. And equally thankful for volunteers and staff, many of which will be now transitioning over to the consolidated site where we'll do first and second doses at AB Tech as a one stop. And as I mentioned earlier, we did begin offering the walk-in availability. We still do have the schedule, you can schedule your appointment as well if that, if that's a preference to you. And again, that's at buncomeredy.org. We continue to plan outreach events. Our outreach team continues to work with our community partners to plan equity events. And I'll also be telling you about some of the worksite events that we've began, beginning to explore. And that, those equity events include our homebound, our homeless, our historically marginalized populations. And we have really sort of focused a lot of our work, or at least a lot of our engagement in planning around four geographical areas because we know our fixed site is here in a central, in Asheville, in more of a central location. But looking at Swananoa and Black Mountain, Sandy Mush, the South Side and Weaverville as potential areas for outreach. And in addition, we are engaging work sites in an effort to reach some of our younger unvaccinated population statewide as we look at new cases. And you may, you might remember the last time I presented to you all that we were seeing, even with our new cases, the average age was in the 30s. And so statewide, that's ringing true too, that most of our new cases are around younger unvaccinated populations, which happen to be folks who are in work, in the workforce. And so part of our outreach now is to add on outreach to work site so that we can begin to reach some of those populations in more of a convenient space for them. So those are still in the planning phases, but we are looking at a, an approach at work sites that would also include friends and families, right? So not just you as the employee, but if you have a loved one or someone that you care about or a friend who also would like to have the vaccine, bring them along with you. So more to come on that. Those are still in the planning stages. And lastly, as I know you all are going to be, or at least have it on your agenda for a proclamation acknowledging and recognizing nurses. I did want to just recognize all nurses in our community and especially our public health nurses for their tireless efforts. You'll see some of them here. This is National Nurses Appreciation Week and it is a time to acknowledge the very long hours that at least our public health nurses and others have been doing around investigating cases. Countless phone calls for contact tracing, numerous home visits to drop off information and supplies and pages and pages of new test results and thousands of vaccines in arms. And not to mention, still continuing to carry on the, what we would have thought of as regular public health, that it didn't stop during the pandemic. So I appreciate each and every one of you that have dedicated your career for caring for others. And so thank you commissioners for the time to present to you today.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? All right, thank you Stacy. All right, next on the agenda is the consideration of the opioid settlement and Brandon Freeman will give us an update on this item.
And we have a brief slideshow here. Max may be able to pull it up for me. The slideshow I'm sharing with you is from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. This outlines a potential settlement agreement between the 100 counties in North Carolina and the North Carolina Attorney General's Office and hopefully the state of North Carolina that would allow for counties and the state to deal with potential settlement funds that could be coming our way as a result of the national opioid litigation. You may have seen in the news that the opioid lawsuits on a national level could settle with the big three players for around $26 billion. When news of that settlement came down, local governments were encouraged to work with their state to see how we would handle that money. Max, if we could go to the next slide. I'm going to turn some of this over to Commissioner Jasmine Beach-Ferrera. She worked really hard with a lot of other people to bring this deal to fruition. And I'm going to invite her to take over from here and also, when I take back over the presentation, to loop me back in, or I'm going to reserve the right to keep calling on Commissioner Ferrera because she knows a lot about this topic. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I've been honored to have the opportunity to represent Buncombe County on the 555 Committee, which was convened by NCACC to work with the North Carolina Department of Justice on developing a settlement. Brandon will talk in a lot of detail about what's involved in the settlement, but at the big-picture level, I think this is one of the best outcomes that we could hope for for the people of North Carolina and to ensure that local governments have the resources necessary to respond in the most impactful ways. Buncombe County has unfortunately experienced the heartbreak of the opioid crisis, and we've also been, you know, at the very front of innovation in this state in responding to it. I know so many of you all have worked on this issue, whether it's been ride-alongs with community paramedics, or briefings, or meeting with community members. What we know unfortunately is that more than 16,000 people in North Carolina have lost their lives between 2000 and 2019 due to the opiate epidemic. And in the past year, despite many new strategies coming online that are helping people, we have seen a really devastating new wave of isolation, despair, drug use and overdose and overdose deaths. And we're certainly seeing those numbers play out locally as we track ED admissions related to overdoses and deaths. And for those who've heard recent updates from our community paramedics, I think we're hearing those stories from them on the front lines very much. Counties are on the front lines of this issue as we are so many of the critical issues. And as you all know, Buncombe County has worked very hard to respond across agencies, whether it's DSS, EMS, public health. And in doing that, we've expended a lot of local resources, which is part of what led us to become involved in litigation in the first place. I hope to recover those so that we can fund the kind of programs around ensuring access to the best practices in treatment and prevention efforts, as well as the enforcement side of this. The other piece we know, of course, is that this epidemic does not respect county lines. And we can't be siloed in any part of our response. And I think part of what's so compelling about the settlement agreement, and credit goes to NCACC staff and also DOJ staff for really hammering out the details of it, is that it is a uniform approach across the entire state that ensures the distribution in a way that really responds to the communities that have been most impacted and also elevates the strategies that are proving to be most impactful. I'll say in closing, before turning it back over to Brandon, that the strategies that are being lifted up as high-impact and effective strategies are ones that we are already working on in Buncombe County. And I just want to take a moment to give thanks and appreciation to staff and leadership who've been so relentless about making sure that we are rolling out the most aggressive and innovative and impactful responses we can as this crisis continues. And I'll turn things back over to Brandon now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Buncombe County is one of 3,000-plus local governments who have sued opioid manufacturers and distributors for their role in this pandemic. All of those lawsuits were lumped together in a multi-district litigation that is taking place in Ohio. That is the litigation where we are expecting to see a large settlement and potentially more settlements to come. But this initial large settlement is a $26 billion settlement. And as I mentioned, the task for local governments was to decide what to do if money is allocated on a state-by-state basis. How would we use that money to combat this epidemic? Max, next slide, please. So Commissioner Beach-Ferrera outlined the, sorry, outlined the group that has worked to get through this allocation model. I'm sorry, Max, I'm going to go to the next slide. It might be helpful to have a timeline here. I've got a blue arrow on this PowerPoint. That is when we filed suit. Buncombe County jumped into this pretty early on. We were the first county in North Carolina to join this litigation, and we've come a long way. Max, we can go to the next slide. This looks at that 555 Committee. There was pretty good representation throughout the state, made up of five commissioners, five county attorneys, and five county managers. And Max, the next slide. And we can skip that one. This is the actual memorandum of agreement that was developed by that group. I think the most impressive thing here is to think about the amount of control that local governments are going to be given over these funds. I think one of the big fears of local governments was that this money would go to the state and may not make it down to the community level and be spent in a way that helps the specific local community that's been impacted by the opioids. It's really difficult to take a state approach to a problem that is so specific to local governments that have these problems that may not be addressed by a global or even a statewide program to address them. So I was shocked when I saw that 80% of the money under this agreement was going to go to local governments, 15% to the state, and then 5% in a county incentive fund. And if we go to the next slide, we can see some of those details. The General Assembly would have the authority to appropriate the 15% of money that goes to them. Local governments likewise would be able to allocate the funding, subject to some parameters that are all targeted to make sure that it goes to actually combating the opioid epidemic. And then 5% of the funds would be left open to incentivize counties who are not a part of the litigation and municipalities who are not a part of the litigation to join into the settlement. The reason for this is that the plaintiffs are going to want some amount of finality. They're going to want to know that when they settle these claims, they're settling them for good. And it's difficult to say that you're going to have a global settlement for all of this, but the more people who, the more communities in North Carolina who are willing to accept this agreement, the more finality they have, and potentially the more money that could come to North Carolina. Because with that finality comes value, and these defendants are willing to pay to have that finality. All right. So the remediation activities are something that we will have to work with our local health experts to understand what will work best for Buncombe County. But the MOA offers two basic models. Max, this may be on the next slide. An option A and an option B. I think the thing to take away from this is that there are a lot of paths we could take to addressing some of the needs that are in our community. And this MOA leaves a lot of room for our public health experts to figure out the best way to go forward. All right, the agreement will be supervised in part by a coordination group. This group will have the ability to help audit funds and make sure that funds are being spent in a way that's appropriate. They'll also be able to modify the way in which counties can spend these funds in the event that some new approach takes shape that was not anticipated before this agreement. So there is a way for this agreement to be flexible and evolve as it needs to. Max, next slide, please. We will have an annual financial impact and reporting requirement. I think it's something that our finance department will have no trouble handling. It seems to be par for the course with the expenditure of any taxpayer funds, and these funds are going back to the taxpayers to try and restore some of the damage that's been done. So that will be nothing new for us. But there will be some accountability as to how these funds are spent. And I believe my last slide is just going to highlight the importance of signing this agreement. I think that for Buncombe County, this is a pretty easy decision. We jumped into this lawsuit pretty early, and this is something that we've been excited to see a resolution to, especially one that's as positive as this. I think the takeaway from this side is if you talk to any of your counterparts across the state who are nervous about it, I think this is a good idea. And the more people in, the more local governments in North Carolina who sign on to this memorandum of agreement, the better chance we have of recovering some funds that could go to help people who have been victimized by this epidemic. And that's all I have. And I would turn it over again to Commissioner Beach-Ferrera if she would like to add anymore.
I think you've covered it. County manager, from a process perspective, what do you, what would come next?
What would come next? The NCACC has actually put out some templates of a resolution that we could sign. So the plan will be to bring that forward to the board for signature. And one thing Brandon did not focus on is cities in our county that are over a certain population should also sign on. The deadline for signing is October 1st. But if we can sign earlier and get that turned in, that will be beneficial. So the plan will be to talk to the city as well to make sure that they're on board because the city is the only city in our town that has the population to get them to sign. But our goal will be to bring that before you, if not the next meeting in May, as soon as we get our templates out, to bring that forward for signature, if that's the pleasure of the board.
I guess I've got a couple of questions. You had a slide that mentioned the national settlement and Purdue Pharma could provide up to $850 million to the state. I guess, help me kind of ballpark, what kind of dollar figure are we talking about here locally?
Well, right around 13 to 14 million or so is the estimate for right now.
Okay. And with your comment earlier about other municipalities, should we expect other smaller towns to be eligible for funds as well, or?
I believe if you look at the allocation, pharma only the city of Asheville.
Just the one?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think that, I think 30,000 is the population threshold for municipalities. And then the idea is that counties would support the smaller municipalities through the funding they receive.
And final question, under that it said allocated over the course of 18 years with the funds being front-loaded. I guess, can you explain that a little further as to what that means?
I think it means that they're going to, the better answer is I don't know exactly what that formula will look like, but the aim of plaintiff's counsel and anyone involved in this will be to get those funds in the hands of counties as quickly as possible.
Right. It is not a straight-line distribution where it's not the money divided over 18 years. There'll be a higher percentage in the front end, and then the remainder over the 18-year period. No one has seen the actual payout pharma at this point in time. We're all going by estimates.
Right.
Buncombe County is about 2.5.
2.5 is the allocation?
2.5, so, yeah. So if you take 850, 80% goes to local government. We get about 2.5 of it.
The one other thing I'll add just to consider is the slide that outlined option A and option B. I think we would be eligible for option A funding primarily because we've been doing so much front-loaded work. And that is sort of, in theory, quicker. The other one requires a planning process and then approval of strategies. I think we'd be able to come to the table and say, we're doing most, if not all, of the high-impact strategies, and we're ready to go.
Are there any other questions? All right, Brandon and Jasmine, thanks for the updates. This sounds very, very promising, and a lot of hard work has been going into this from many places, locally, statewide, across the country. So it's great to see it coming to fruition in this way. All right. Next up is discussion about the addendum to the Weaverville Tax Collection Agreement, and Michael Frews is going to help us out with this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here as the third string today, filling in for Don Warren and Jennifer Pike. This one is really simple. We're getting near to the end of the second year of a three-year agreement for collecting taxes for the town of Weaverville. And one provision in that agreement requires the county to get the funds to which the town of Weaverville is entitled deposited into the North Carolina Capital Management Trust account. They want some flexibility, and we're, the county staff is willing to work with them with your consent. Just wanted to amend that, just to simply say to be transferred to the town by electronic transfer into an account identified for the town finance officer. So that's all we're really asking is just to make that change.
All right.
No other questions? We would just propose to put that on consent for the next meeting.
Sounds fine. Great. Thanks. All right. And next up, Rachel Nygaard is going to talk to us about early childhood education modular
Good afternoon, commissioners. Our typical cadence is to come to you a meeting in advance for items that will be added to your regular meeting. So we've missed that because of the timing of a project. And so today's check-in is about an item that's been added to your agenda for this evening, but wanted to make sure you had a chance to see that it was there and ask any questions prior to that agenda. It's on the consent agenda, and you'll see it listed as a partnership for a pre-K facility at Avery's Creek Elementary School. The explanation is that the Early Childhood Committee has wrapped up their work of preparing funding recommendations for FY22. Those were delivered to the budget office last Friday and will be included in the county commissioners' May 18th meeting when you see the recommended budget for FY22. In those recommendations, there's $100,000 for Buncombe County Schools to install a pre-K facility on the site of Avery's Creek Elementary School. The document in your packet gives a little bit of information about that school. They are, they would become the 15th out of 23 elementary schools within the Buncombe County school system that would have an onsite Head Start. Buncombe County Schools will partner with community action opportunities to be the provider of Head Start services in that site. The county funds would be used for installation expenses. Buncombe County Schools can secure the modular facility. They've got a funding source to do that. County funds would cover those site prep things. So there's examples, power hookup and concrete and ramps and fencing, things like that. Community action opportunities would cover the supplies and equipment, playground. And moving on this inter-local agreement now, rather than waiting for FY22 budget adoption, will allow Buncombe County Schools to begin the project so that it can be ready for the new school year.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I can explain, just from the Early Childhood Committee. The reason that this has come about is because in the proposed reorganization or whatever it is, Asheville City it is, Asheville City Schools has been talking about doing, one of the classrooms at the Eddington Center is going to be displaced because of their reorganization. And, the reason we need this is we don't want to lose any pre-K classrooms and especially Head Start classrooms. And thankfully, the county was able to step up to the plate to help us out here, and as a result of it, we wanted to help them out, and that's why, you know, we, hopefully we'll vote to provide 100,000 for them to purchase the modular classroom.
Thank you. Just quick point of clarification, the action tonight will approve the agreement so that Buncombe County Schools can begin the work, and the funding will still be in the FY22 program.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the info. We'll take it up, well, it'll be on the consent agenda, but it doesn't sound like there's any questions about it. So, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
And, next up is the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, and Nate Pennington will present this item with possible help from others.
Yes. How are y'all doing? So, Jillian's with me today, and just to have a couple of basic slides, but what we really wanted to do is, based on your feedback, answer any questions that you have. This is an ongoing process. There's a lot of moving parts. So, we're here for you. We'll just roll through the, kind of where we are in the process now. We received five vendor responses to the RFP. That closed on April the 27th. We'd like to report to you that we've stood up a website now that's gone live. It'll be upgraded at regular intervals. There's not a lot, a whole lot of content to it initially, but as we move along in the process, more and more content will obviously be added to it. The Steering Committee application, now live. It makes a call for representation to discuss the key issues affecting our community, which we outlined in the RFP specifically. So, when we get into those RFP responses, we'll be taking a very detailed look at how they responded to each one of those issues. And, the reason that's important too, is that part of your work with staff in the community will be the appointment of that all-important Steering Committee. Who you think and who we evaluate is important to represent each of those key issues. It's open until May the 17th, so a fairly small window on that. The application is posted online. We've also included paper applications at the libraries, and that way we would try to get it out to as many of the community members as possible that may not have access to a computer. Next steps, the Selection Committee will review and evaluate the proposals, and then we'll conduct vendor interviews. And, Jillian, tentatively scheduled May 12th? Okay. The receipt of those applications given for the Steering Committee by May 17th will perform an initial review, and then we'll forward them on to the Commissioners for interviews and appointment, no different than a lot of you have done for the other committees that you've assigned members to. Hope to have that Steering Committee seated around August or September of this year. And then, we really wanted to leave the rest of this discussion for any questions that you may have that we can answer for you right now.
Terrific. All right. Commissioners, are there any initial questions or thoughts in this process?
How long will this whole process take approximately?
So, it'll approximately take two years to actually get the plan adopted, but we have asked in regards to the Steering Committee that it be a three-year appointment if we wanted the Steering Committee to do anything with implementation of the plan.
Thank you.
Nate, perhaps it'd be helpful if you could kind of give an overview for the rest of the Commission in terms of the relationship between the Steering Committee and the County Planning Board and the staff and the future consultant, and kind of how information flows and ideas and recommendations bubble to the surface.
Sure. I'd be happy to. The Planning Board is actually, it's ingrained in the Code of Ordinances that this is one of their key functions. They just don't get to do it a lot. A lot of their time is spent doing things like subdivision review or review and rezoning applications. But, their primary goal is to assist with the goals, objectives, and policies of a long-range plan. So, certainly, they are key in this process. The Steering Committee is an adjunct sort of committee that stood up with representation across the county, including not only subject matter experts, but also an inclusive and cross-sectional group. We'd like to hear from people from all across the county. I'm reminded often of the lady from Sandy mush that comes here often, and she talks about how thankful she is to get a broadband hotspot at their community center. Hearing from those folks that we don't often hear from, I think is critical to our long-term objectives across the county. So, we want to not only include just subject matter experts, but maybe somebody that's retired and say has worked for the schools for 30 years, or somebody who's worked in the different fields and understands and has a concept. Newcomers, people who've lived here a long time, just a healthy mix of people, and knowing that we're going to be talking about a very controversial topic sometimes, level-headed people, people that are able to bring down the temperature and bring people back to the conversation would be good as well. In terms of integration with the Planning Board and conversations with you all and staff, we want to hear from the consultant. We want to bring forward in this, so it's a sort of a moving process that hasn't been fully defined yet, but it's our plan. That means we can make adjustments. We certainly are told what we need to have in a plan, basically, by the general statutes, but it also gives us a fairly wide latitude. Would you add anything to that?
I would just add, for the Commissioners, we are going to try to get some youth on the Steering Committee. We are going to try to appoint a high school student and a college student.
And, can you share some more about what the initial review will look like? And then, how many applications are you expecting? Trying to get a sense of that, of what you'll be bringing in front of the board.
That's the million-dollar question. I'm very interested to see how many applications. I hope it is ultra-robust. We had planned to advance. Jillian, do you want to talk about this, that we plan to narrow it down a little bit but give them wide latitude?
So, we are going to look at it in terms of those focus areas and from an equity lens, and as Nate was saying, geographically, so we can make sure all areas of the county are represented. And, we're going to try to rank those for you guys and send them and the, that ranking and the applications to you. I'm sorry, what was your other question?
Well, the review process for you, and then I asked, you know, do you have any expectation of how many?
How many? So, currently, after three days, we have about 20. So, that's a good number.
That's good.
So, if it keeps up, I'd say probably we might get around 100. That would be my guess.
And, so currently, your plan is to rank all those and send those to us?
Yes.
Yes.
And, did you mention in your, sorry, Terry?
Go ahead.
Did you mention in your initial remarks a May 12th date for first round of interviews, or did I mishear that?
So, the May 12th date is actually for the RFP Review Committee vendor interviews. May 17th is the closing for the Steering Committee. Lots happening in May. And, we will create that ranking for you and get it to you as fast as possible.
I have one question. It's kind of maybe a question to the Commission as well as, you know, any thoughts from the staff would be welcome. So, this is a, you know, I bet you are going to get 100 or, you know, some large number of folks, and we appreciate y'all looking at that to kind of start thinking that through. So, but, you know, kind of recognizing what a, we, you know, do a lot of different boards and commission appointments, but recognizing this is probably the biggest group that'll, you know, for a particular group we've ever appointed for. Before, I wanted to ask if there might be interest among the Commission in terms of forming like an ad hoc subgroup of the Commission to work on this a bit, right? I mean, and, and so that was a kind of a process question I wanted to ask. I mean, ultimately, I think the whole Commission needs to vote on this and approve it, but just looking at the scope of the work to be done, if that might be of interest to the Commission. You know, with some of our subcommittees, we have three people. I don't think this has to be three if there were, you know, if there were four people on the Commission, or whatever the number is that really wanted to dig into that and work on it. You know, I think it could be kind of whatever we want it to be, if the Commission was interested in it. Of course, you know, the default would just be, it just all comes to the full board and we just all discuss it. So, I wanted to put that question forward to see what the, what the level of interest in that might be on the Commission, or any kind of feedback on that. I don't think from the, from the process, the staff are recommending would necessarily change a lot there. It's just that there would be sort of a, an ad hoc group of the Commission that would kind of receive the information first and work on it, and then ultimately make recommendations back to the full board.
Specifically, you're asking around those interview sections, because there's, specifically, you're asking around a subcommittee for the interviews, because there's, if we have 100 that we're bringing forward to you, that would be...
I think mostly, I mean, if we did form, you know, a kind of a working group of the Commission, if there were other things that staff might need some feedback on, maybe they could provide that too. But, I think it would, I'm thinking mostly in terms of just processing the applications that are going to come in for the appointments to the Steering Committee. I guess that was the main job I kind of had in mind if we did do this. So, I don't know. Any feedback from the Commission? Either way, I mean, I just, again, I just wanted to kind of raise it as a process question.
Well, I'm supportive of that idea and would be interested in working on that. I think with so many applicants, and even with the help of staff and ranking those, I think that's fantastic. I think it'll still be important to kind of balance the geographies of these individuals with their professions versus just finding, you know, regular folk that are level-headed that will be good additions. And, so that's kind of a tall task, to find 20 people to fit that. And, so, I think a small group of us would be helpful.
I don't know. I come from the other point on that. I think this is the most important committee that in my time on the Commission or from what I can think of in the last probably 15 or 20 years. And, when you look at what this will do for the county going forward, I think it's going to be important for all of us to participate. And, because, let's face it, the public will be holding all of us accountable. And, I think, I think this is one time we all need to step up to the plate. I understand where you're coming from, but I think this is too important. I think we all need to participate.
I echo that, Commissioner Whitesides. I think we turned our microphones on at the same time to say the same thing. I think this is one of the biggest, if not the biggest issue that we'll be addressing in, you know, the next year or two, and I think the onus is on all seven of us to ensure that the right folks are selected and helping get those folks on board for the staff. So, I think it is a large undertaking for us. I'll acknowledge that. But, I think, I think that's our responsibility as seven Commissioners is to be fully engaged in this process.
Sure. And, I just would say, like, to me, like, the, and I totally respect the perspectives on that. To me, it's not necessarily, like, my least openness to it is not necessarily a reflection that it's not important, but in some ways that it's like, to me, it's so important that actually dedicating a group of people to spend extra time on it, it means that it's kind of more important than, you know, just kind of the typical issues that come to us. I think we've, on the other issues that we've really tried to elevate, affordable housing, early childhood education, things like that, we've, we have created dedicated groups of people to really focus on them, because the reality is we only have a certain amount of time for things to be considered by the, by the full board. And, my sense has been when we've gotten some of these groups to really dig into it, the totality of the work that goes in from the Commission kind of increases rather than decreases. But, I totally appreciate the comments. I just wanted to share that comment. But, any other thoughts on this and on this idea?
I'm interested either way. I mean, I kind of agree with you, Brownie, there on that, that maybe a small portion could get more in-depth, but then bring it back. We're all going to be involved in it at the end, but to just really spend a little extra time, even if we alternate a little bit along the way. So, I'm good either way, but I want to be involved real deep into this.
So, I agree. I can go either way. My initial thought was to actually have a small group because of the digging in on that aspect, so I definitely see that perspective. But, I do believe at the end of the day, we're all responsible. So, depending on how everyone feels, but if we do have a small group, I'm certainly willing to dedicate extra time to that and working on that if that's what the Commission decides.
Okay. Jasmine, well, it comes down to you.
I'm with Robert and Terry on this one. Julie, I honestly, I think both models work. And, I think, you know, I do have a slight preference for the kind of like task force, smaller group model that then brings it back to all of us. Maybe there could be some slight modifications to that, where like, if other Commissioners, or, you know, opportunities for engagement throughout that process, if other Commissioners wanted to sit in on those conversations or meetings, something like that. But, yes, this is one of the most important things we'll do. I fully agree on that.
Okay. Okay. Well, we're kind of, kind of all over the place, which is totally fine. We're just totally fine. It's, we don't, you know, I just kind of wanted to, you know, just kind of elevate it as a process question. So, we'll kind of continue to think about it. I don't think there's any clear consensus on that at this point. So, any other questions or feedback for our staff at this time on this comp plan?
One ask that we'll have, I believe, last time Commissioner Wells talked about sharing the application out, so we would ask that you share that to make sure we get as much representation from across the districts as possible. So, anything you can help there will be much appreciated.
Yeah, we need that.
Okay. Well, I know I'm hearing a lot of really, a lot of interest in this in the community. People are excited about it, so I think we're going to, there will be robust participation. I think that's, that's almost a sure thing. So, all right, well, any other comments or thoughts from the Commission at this time?
I've got one more question for Nate. Am I understanding the timeline correctly, that we'll have a consultant chosen before interviews are over for the Steering Committee? Am I...
So, we are going to try to get the contract in place by, I think it's June 15th, and then we'd have the consultant in place, and I'm assuming, I am just assuming it'll take you guys a while to get that Steering Committee in place, given the interview process and how many applications we've already received.
The reason I ask is I'm just, I'm sure whoever we choose will have done this dozens of times and handled committees like this dozens of times, and I would be personally interested to hear their recommendations and experience on picking a group like this. Are there particular professions that they really think are essentially, you know, essential to be on this type of group? And, that, that sort of feedback, I'd love to hear from them when they're selected, so...
We do as well. And, I think we're on a marination period, and there's always a couple of options of working with a small group, convening a work session. We really want to get the consultant in front of you to answer those all-important questions, and we want to see their work. What have products have they done? How have they done them successfully? Those are the ones we want to see.
Thank you. One other just comment I would make would be, as we think about populating the Steering Committee, you totally agree with the comments that have been made about, we need good representation from across the county. In some ways, you know, when I, I think when we think about county planning efforts, we tend to think about it in terms of the people who live outside of municipalities, because those are the areas, of course, we have legal, some more legal jurisdiction on planning and development rules and things like that. I think for a comprehensive planning process like this, though, we definitely need to be cognizant of including people who live in Asheville, the small towns in the county, even though we don't have the same legal jurisdictions there. I think how, how this county grows between our towns and city and rural areas, it's all so related to one another that those, and of course, all those folks are residents of Buncombe County too. So, I think it's very important to make sure we, we hear the voices of those folks and not just the folks... not just the folks who do live in the unincorporated areas of the, the county too. So just want to kind of want to share that comment.
Without a doubt. It's a regional plan. We need to look at, at what the phenomenons that are occurring outside of the county. You look at Old Fort, you look at how it's redeveloping now, that's only demonstrates how folks are moving outside and coming into work. So the integration fully of the municipalities, business, residents, it's all important because at the end of the day, the Gateway Community, everyone starts here and they move from in or out on a daily basis. So that's a very good point.
All right. All right. Well, commissioners, thanks for your feedback and we look forward to talking further as this process gets ramped up.
Thank you.
All right. The last item on our agenda is a update on broadband and Tim Love is going to present this.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. So wanted to take a little bit of time today to talk about broadband. You've heard me talk about this topic before. I know you're very aware of the challenges we face in the community. But what we wanted to do is just take a few minutes today to kind of refresh on some of what we're seeing, make sure we're all kind of on the same page and then update you on some of the big activities that have occurred. So some of this may feel like old hat for some of y'all, but for some of you may feel new, but either way, hopefully a good refresher. So we'll start with kind of what we know, some updates on the Buncombe Broadband Work Group as well as the Buncombe RFP, and then we'll talk about what's coming next. So what we know off the, off the top, the importance of broadband. And so off, at the very top, we know that internet access is limited. And when we talk about access, I want to talk about it in terms of access, but also accessibility. In 2018, we conducted a survey here in Buncombe County to assess respondents across the county to see if they were using the internet, if, and if not, why not? From that survey, we found about 10% of our survey respondents did not have a subscription to use the internet. And so there's an asterisk beside that number because, you know, we didn't survey 250,000 residents. We had a sample of about 2,600. So it is a sample, but nonetheless, 10% said they did not have access. In terms of accessibility, which is a different issue, so maybe access is, you know, I just can't get connected. Accessibility is I can get connected, I just can't afford it. We found that 75% said that the service was either inadequate and 45% said it was too expensive. So even in those places where we have the infrastructure, there's challenges. It's too slow, it's too expensive. That said, we know internet access is hugely important. And I will save you the COVID analogy because you've already heard it. But what our survey showed us is that 60% of our respondents used the internet for education and 35% used it for, for business. And so what that tells us, this isn't about, you know, just gaming or fun stuff. This is about, you know, a necessity of life, being able to get on a Zoom call as a, as a child or as a small business owner. Of course, COVID-19 brought that even more to bear and we saw the impacts of that as we sent our children home and people were unable, unable to go to work. So that's kind of what we know about how important this is and why some folks aren't getting online. What I wanted to spend some time on is what are the challenges? Because there's a bunch. And I, I don't think we've talked about this in detail, so I wanted to take some time on that. So challenges, off the top, cost. You know, terrain impacts construction costs. And we know that anecdotally because we know that we're in a mountainous place. We know that trenching through granite is expensive, but that's exactly what you're doing when you're laying broadband. It's not just, it's like any other utility, gas, electric, whatever we're doing, it's expensive to build in geographically challenging areas. Additionally, in some of parts of our county, I think we know, these are more rural, lower density areas. And so you run into a kind of a, a supply cost issue. You know, for a provider, the cost of infrastructure is the same, but the, the number of folks to offset that cost through subscription fees or whatever it may be is lower in our, our more rural areas. So you have a challenge of how do you build a business case as an internet service provider to make it work so that you can invest in these areas that don't have access? Some of the big costs that we see in this area, you can see on the third bullet, this quote unquote, make ready cost. And so this is what our utility providers refer to as the cost to basically make a telephone or a utility pole ready. You know, we see these poles everywhere, but the reality is they're, they're regulated. So we can't just, you know, hang fiber on any pole. You know, there, there's rules about the distance between the, the different fiber, the electricity, et cetera. And so to get a pole make ready, there's sometimes costs. And that could be as simple as putting in a new pole, which doesn't seem that challenging, except if you have to do it thousands of times over very rural areas of the county, you can see how that would become costly. Additionally, laying fibers, I've already kind of described, very expensive, depending on where you're at. You know, if you're retrenching, doing something like that, that's an expensive cost. So the cost bucket, kind of obvious, I think we all get that. What's also a challenge, but maybe something we haven't talked about as much, are the statutes that prohibit local government activity in this space. And so right off the top, statutes prohibit local governments from constructing internet infrastructure unless it's for county business operations. So if we wanted for some reason to lay fiber that connected 200 College to, you know, Woodfin, that's okay. It's a part of our business operations. However, just laying fiber to get to Sandy mush, Broad River or someplace because it's in the public interest, that's not, that's not a valid statutory reason based on the way the statutes are written. Those aren't direct county business operations, so we're prohibited from doing that. So we can't just go run fiber wherever we want it. That's step one. Additionally, the, the statute that I reference here in Bullet Two, 153A, 459, allows local governments, counties in particular, to expand infrastructure, but with some very specific parameters. And those are, one, you must do an RFP, which makes sense. The catch is after you do that RFP, the infrastructure that you've paid for does not belong to the county. That infrastructure belongs to the provider that you've partnered with and awarded that contract to. So think of any provider in your head. We could award an RFP to them for X dollars. Hopefully, there's a cost share, there should be. But all of that infrastructure then becomes the providers. And that's how the statute's written and there's no exception. So in summary, you know, counties shall not provide internet service, they shall not own infrastructure unless for governmental purposes, and they cannot sell or lease that infrastructure. So that's our current statutory environment. And we'll talk at the end of the presentation about some of the shifting sands there, but I wanted you to understand kind of what we're facing today unless we see some different changes in our, our statutes. Finally, I wanted to talk about data. And data is important because it drives our decision-making. If the data's bad, it makes decision-making challenging. So the FCC has developed maps to identify unserved populations across the country. What I'm here to tell you, and I think the FCC would admit this as well, their data is horrendous. They've identified unserved populations and they're limited in what they can get. The example that I'll give you, if we think about Madison County, it's not Buncombe County, but humor me. In terms of the number of unserved households in Madison County, the FCC projects a number. And this number is used to make decisions on grant applications that the state administers, that the feds administer, et cetera. I'm not going to ask you to guess because you never would, but the number of unserved households in the county of Madison is zero, according to FCC data. And so I, I bring that not to, not to poke our friends at the FCC, but just acknowledge there's challenges in the data. So because of that, local governments like ourselves have had to go through their own processes to define their own data, to define their own maps to determine who's served and unserved. And so that's something I'll show you later. Next up, infrastructure maps, proprietary. If you'd like to know where there's fiber, where Charter Fiber exists, or AT&amp;T Fiber exists, or anybody's fiber, they may or may not give it to you. And so that's another challenge. So our, our data is incomplete, which makes decision-making difficult, but these are just the challenges that I wanted you to be aware of as we go into our next sections. Stop me at any point. So key activities, what have we done since? So there's a few completed actions, I'm not going to talk about those. I want you to be aware of our ongoing actions, most specifically our Buncombe Broadband Work Group and our Broadband RFP. And so I've got a slide on each of those, so I'll get you up to speed there. So our, our broadband work group, purpose, short-term work group, very singular focus, which is to issue and evaluate the Buncombe Broadband RFP. The purpose of this RFP is to comply with the statute, put out an RFP to expand broadband to unserved areas. And so we've done that and I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit more about it. Our work group is made up of a number of different community organizations and stakeholders. So we've got both school systems at the table, ACS and BCS, Land of Sky is of course providing support, North Carolina Department of Information Technology, the Housing Authority, and then a number of community members who have kind of come to us as well. This was a formal application process that was where folks were evaluated. I'd like to note that some of these community members are not your average community members. These are folks that have deep expertise in, in the field, former FCC employees that we're fortunate to have in our community that kind of know the ins and outs. Our work group came up with a handful of guiding principles and you can see those listed. I'll talk about them because they are important. From a priority and focus, you know, the belief is that these solutions should address access and accessibility. So not just the infrastructure, but also the costs for those that cannot afford broadband. From a technology standpoint, we have to be technology neutral. This is a principle for us, but it's also a part of the statute. And what that means is that we can't, in our RFP as an example, say that we want a fiber solution, or that we want a fixed wireless solution, or we want SpaceX. What we can define is we want this speed, this latency, or whatever it is. We can't be specific to the type of technology. Our solutions should reflect short and long-term needs. Like we recognize there's a long-term vision we got to get to, but the reality is people need to get connected today. So how do we solve kind of for both problems? Resources, very simply, let's attract investment and leverage other funds wherever possible, state, federal, private. Let's make sure we're utilizing other people's money, if you will. The work group has been heavily involved in provider interviews. We interviewed over 15 providers on the front end of this process, so thinking like folks like Charter, US Cellular, AT&amp;T, and asked them specifically, what do you need? What are the challenges? What can we do to make this a successful process? Additionally, our work group, as we've gone through the proposal process, has been helping us with reference checks and then of course, proposal evaluation. In December of 20, we issued the RFP after about three months of development, which also included sort of the, the provider interviews that I mentioned earlier. And that RFP includes a few things. So scope is countywide. We want to see a countywide solution, but we reserve the right to award to multiple providers if we desire. The focus is on unserved areas. We're not looking to just increase speeds in areas that already have access. We're looking to hit those that are unserved for some reason. We're offering up any assets that we have. You know, the county has towers, we have buildings, some of those assets are useful to different types of providers, so we've offered those up. Of course, we're technology neutral, which I've already talked to you about, but we also requested an affordability plan from any provider that responded. And so we want to know specifically, what can you do beyond what you're doing today to make internet access more affordable to those that can't afford it? So that was a part of every proposal we've received. In terms of the technology requirements, I, I mentioned we're technology neutral, but that doesn't mean we can't define our requirements. And so these are the example requirements that we've, we've put in the proposal. I don't want to get into all of them with you today unless you'd like to. A key, though, that I want to talk about is our preferred speed. So that's the first bullet. And so our preferred speed in this proposal is 100 by 10. And that's a really important thing because when we compare to the FCC as an example, they consider someone to be unserved that's less than 25 by three. So we've already sort of scaled up and said, you know what? We don't think 25 by three is where we need to be. And the reason we know that is because we have a perfect case study. The past year, you know, folks have been home, they've been multiple Zoom calls, you know, children on at the same time as their parents. And we know that creates challenges within a household, certainly that has less than 100 megs down in their house. So we wanted to go ahead and acknowledge that we don't think 25 by three is sufficient. We're shooting for 100 by, by 10 because that's where we think we are today, candidly, but where we know we're going to be as we continue to see folks continue to use the internet in their homes for work, education, et cetera. So let's not just solve today, let's think about what's coming in the future. So that was a key point for us. Another key point, you know, technical sustainability. So let's make sure that whatever solution we put in place today, there's a plan moving forward to continue to evolve so that five years from now, we're not having the same conversation about how we can only have two people on a Zoom call at the same time in our household. Does that make sense? Thanks. So that's our RFP. We, through the RFP, issued it in December. We gave a very long period through the beginning of March for our providers to respond. The reason we did that was because of advice from the providers about other grant programs that were going on that I can describe to you later and sort of waiting for those to come to closure. So we received a number of proposals in March and we've been evaluating those with our providers. And we've gone through a process with the providers to interview them, understand, and really move them around to where we need them to be to, to have a solution that's useful in Buncombe.
Tim?
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt. I wanted to ask a question about your county assets bullet. I can kind of imagine what that, what that is, but I'm sure we have emergency service communication towers that we own, but also probably space that we lease. And then there's the fire districts that probably have similar spaces that they own or, or lease. Does that include, what's included underneath that?
Yep. You're spot on. It's, the, the most valuable assets tend to be towers and there, there's a variety of those, some that we own, some that our fire districts own. There's also a network of towers that we don't own that are like statewide. You know, you may hear about Viper Towers and, and things of that nature. So those are the types of assets. And where we can just provide access, that's what we'd like to do. Where we can help negotiate access, that's also where we've offered to play. So, you know, as part of the RFP, we included an appendix to help drive our providers. And so that's what I'm going to get to next. And so I caution you that this may be slightly scary because the map that I'm going to show you, everything in red is an area where a parcel cannot get a, a 100 meg service. So where it does not meet our requirements and thus is considered an unserved area. So this is our map. I, I don't know how well you can see it, but again, red in, in this sense is bad, meaning that there, you can't get access to 100 megs, but that doesn't mean that you may not have access to something else. So you could have a 25 by three service, you could have DSL, you could have any number of services. So you may have a way of getting to the internet, but it's not necessarily efficient. It may have low latency where you're getting kicked off all the time, or you have a fuzzy screen, you can't do a Zoom. So there's any, any number of issues that you may face. And so we included this map in, in our RFP. And you remember earlier when I talked to you about FCC data and I told you that, that data was really bad? We had to create this map because of that FCC data. If we showed a map of FCC data, it would show a much rosier picture, which is not the reality. So we went through a process where we effectively checked addresses by addresses to see who could actually get service based on an actual address. And to do that, you know, we had some, some folks from UNCA who supported us and did it in an efficient way, but we actually did kind of a check. Can I get access at this household? And so that's how we know this answer. I would never claim that this map is 100% accurate and we asked our providers to tell us if it isn't. When we gave them the map, we said, if it's wrong, tell me and we'll fix it. But what's key to note about this map, if you look at sort of the southeast corner, Broad River, we have a, a really bad pocket there where a lot of folks don't have access. If you look at sort of the, the northwest, the Sandy mush area, again, seeing a similar story. Then you see scattered across the county, there's a, a lot of folks that maybe not, are not able to get access. In the center of the county, we kind of expect that to resolve on its own naturally as providers continue to build out their networks. In these sort of more distant pockets like Sandy mush and Broad River, that's where we see the need for more investment because the geography there is really challenging and the, the density of the population is really challenging, or low, I should say. So that's just a picture of kind of what, what's going on and what it looks like. I caution you, you know, this doesn't mean that everyone on this map doesn't have access. They may have access, just not at a speed that we think is sustainable. So shifting gears, so we've talked about the RFP, we're evaluating the proposals. I wanted to spend some time on technology and not get too deep into the weeds, but just help you understand because as we go through the RFP, there's different types of technologies that have been proposed and I just want you to be. of technologies that have been proposed, and I just want you to be roughly familiar with those. So, this is a graphic that we stole from Texas, but I think it does a nice job. And so, I'm going to start on the left. And so, right off the bat, we have this concept of mobile broadband. And so, I'm just going to change the words on this, and think of this as like cellphone, like the internet access that you get on your phone. It's mobile because it moves with you. Our current technology tends to be 4G, but I'm sure you've already heard from some, good and bad, that cell providers are quickly moving to 5G. Movement to 5G over time will mean that folks will be able to pull down up to like one gig in terms of speeds. So, that technology vastly changing as the network improves. Below that, you see cable. That's just your traditional provider, like Charter, who provides through a cable modem. If we go back up to the top, you see there's a water tower. On top of that water tower, there's a little satellite. That's fixed wireless. And so, fixed wireless is similar to maybe mobile broadband, except different. Fixed wireless typically requires you to have direct line of sight. So, as long as you can see that water tower and that antenna on the water tower, you've got a pretty good signal. If you can't see the water tower, because, you know, there's a tree in between you and the water tower, you're probably going to have a degraded signal. So, that's a key difference between fixed wireless and mobile broadband. 5G technology, less impacted by things like foliage, like trees, although somewhat impacted. So, as we think about solutions, you know, a cellular solution may be more robust than a fixed wireless solution, which relies on different technology. And you'll start to see this as we bring proposals forward. Going back down to the bottom, fiber, this is your traditional, you know, fiber to your home. That's like the perfect solution, assuming you can get it to you and you can afford the construction costs. Because again, we're dredging fiber lines, or we're hanging them on poles that need to be made ready. If we go to the far right, you see there's a barn. On top of the barn, there's a satellite. Satellite, the most common provider in and around town is HughesNet, which is something that's used in some areas, but the speeds are really low and latency can be a challenge. We're seeing that game change as well. I'm sure you're familiar with the work of Elon Musk and what he's planning with Starlink. So, that's another type of technology that has its own challenges. The final is DSL. And so, DSL, all around the county, speeds are really low. Also, sort of a strange infrastructure in that there's like a physical barrier to how many people can be on the internet. So, you may have people that are connected, but you can't actually get connected until someone else drops out, because the DSL box is full, which is just a strange thing. It's old technology, but I just wanted to share that. That's something that does exist, but not something that we think will continue to be a key player for us. So, those are the types of technology that exist. You'll see more about this as we move forward, but I just wanted you to have in the back of your mind, there's a lot of different solutions, and these solutions could be better in different places. You know, a fixed wireless, a mobile broadband solution might be better in a place where construction cost is really high and population density is really low. As opposed to, in a very urban setting, additional fiber may be more attainable because of the density to offset those costs. So, it's kind of a trade-offs conversation. So, I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. At any point, if there's questions, stop me. But in terms of what's next, we're going through the proposal review now. We went through an initial response that we received in March. Based on what we saw from the providers, we asked them to kind of take a different look at what we needed to accomplish in Buncombe County, which is to serve our unserved. And so, we issued an addendum, which everyone has responded to and which we just received yesterday. Next up, we'll do our second round of Q&amp;A with our providers to kind of understand what they're proposing, make sure that the technology's viable. And then, depending on how that goes, we'll begin sort of a contract negotiation process to work with these providers. Assuming we can get to a good point with a provider, we'd bring something back to the board for your approval. Estimated completion date is July. Just, it depends on how that negotiation process goes, but I'm hopeful that we can be back before you sometime around July. So, that's what's next. If you've got questions on that, please let me know. I have one more slide, and then I'll take any questions you have. I also wanted to talk about the changing landscape. And so, this is an area where there's a ton of attention, not just here locally, but at the state and federal level. And so, things are changing, and so, we're just evaluating what's going on. First off, grant funds. The American Rescue Plan, as a great example, through the local fiscal recovery fund, prioritizes broadband across the country. We have some questions at the state level as to how we can utilize those funds, but nonetheless, we see that as a priority. Additionally, there is the Coronavirus Capital Projects Fund, which we have very little information about. It's established through Treasury, prioritizes broadband again, but zero details on their website. They're just TBD, it's coming, but it's a separate source of funds than the local fiscal recovery funds that we've talked about. Next up is the North Carolina Great Grant. And so, we went through a Great Grant cycle this past year, and there was an award made to the Sandy Mush community with the French Broad Co-op. And so, we know that that's moving forward, and so, we're excited about what that means, and in some way relieves some of the pressure in that area. Additionally, there's the ARDOF. That's our third bullet. That's a federal program. And there's an impact to the Broad River area with the ARDOF funds. I won't get into the weeds on what that is. It's a limited impact, and the timing on it is a little TBD, but there are potential grant dollars available to parts of Broad River as well. One of the big areas I'd ask for you to sort of consider today is North Carolina legislation. Right now, there's two Senate bills that are in place, 689 and 547. 689, I think we've talked to you all about. This is a key piece of legislation for us, because, to my knowledge, there's no other legislation that would allow us to use federal and state grant dollars to fund infrastructure expansion through our RFP. Right now, that's completely prohibited, so we could not use local fiscal recovery dollars unless there's a change to the legislation like we've seen in SB 689. So, that's a critical point that we've communicated. I know we've shared with some of the local delegation, but it's something I think we need to continue to hammer home. SB 547, also interesting, the Fiber Act are really great, would give local governments the ability to expand, potentially sell and lease infrastructure, which I think is really exciting, but does not explicitly address the issue I identified earlier, with the ability to use federal and state dollars, like the American Rescue Plan, to sort of move forward with broadband expansion efforts. So, both good bills. 689, to me, really critical today for moving forward with coronavirus relief funds to support this critical need in our community. So, just wanted to remind you all of that. In terms of evolving technologies, we're seeing a lot changing. Elon Musk and Starlink are getting a lot of attention for what they're doing. Our work group has evaluated the solution from a technical standpoint and thinks it's really exciting, but doesn't necessarily think it's a mainstream solution. It might be a great solution, you know, on top of, you know, a mountaintop, but maybe not a great solution for an entire region of a county. So, that's a caution there. In the 5G space, we're seeing our cellular providers continue to upgrade their networks, and those speeds are going to be really competitive as we move forward. So, that's something to keep an eye on as well. The final piece is partnerships with private, public, and other organizations. A lot of people are talking about broadband, and we're listening. And so, there's a number of partnerships that we're discussing. Nothing that I can share with you today, because we're still in the early steps, but there are folks that are trying to tackle this issue with us, which is a good thing. So, I've been long. I apologize, but I thought it was important, because there's a lot going on. It's a sort of nuanced topic. I'd open it up to any questions or comments that you have.
Thanks. This is very helpful, and thanks to everyone working on this. Just want to make sure I'm tracking with you around how the statutory issues intersect with what we are trying to do. So, if we see 689 pass, that clears the way for us to proceed. If it doesn't, and we have the current status quo, or potentially 547 passes, we have some real challenges ahead. Is that a fair assessment?
Yep, that is correct.
Okay. So, we just kind of got to wait to see how the legislature resolves this, and then make final decisions on the basis of that?
I think that's right. And Mr. Fru and I have been chatting a little bit today. There's portions of 689, and if we could just see appear in any bill, I think we'd be pleased. So, that's something for us to consider, but we really need the go-ahead to be able to use general fund revenue or state and federal revenue for this RFP. That would be ideal.
And just quick follow-up question. Under the current statutes, is the state empowered to expand access to? It says it restricts what local governments can do. Can the state government act more freely in this space?
You know, I don't believe so, and let us take a look at that, but I think they're similarly tied, so.
Okay, thank you.
Because I have a clarifying question on the grant funds. Speaking to the Great Grant and the ARDOF grant, just so I know, like, just because we receive grant funds, does that guarantee actual internet access to addresses, or is it still kind of somewhat up in the air to the private company involved with receiving those funds? Help me understand that.
Absolutely. Excellent question. And I think Great Grant, I think guarantees access. And guarantee is a strong word, you know that, but much more likely to see something like that come through. ARDOF, very different. This is an auction process, and in a true sense of the word. So, providers bid on areas of the country, and their bids are evaluated on a number of variables, including cost. And so, you may win a bid at a low-cost bid that makes it very challenging to actually do what you say you're going to do. There's concerns in the space that that structure promotes folks sort of bidding on areas to take them off the map. And so, that's a concern for us. So, anytime we see ARDOF, we're like excited, but we want to see it proved. Additionally, ARDOF, the structure of it, there's no, it's a reimbursable grant process, so you have to spend money to get money, but there's no upfront grant, so you can see how someone may wait, if it's just not, if it's not worth it from a cost benefit, they may just never spend, and there's really no penalty, if that makes sense.
And Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, so the Great Grant, in two years, they have to build out with that one. So, that really helps, because there's a defined period of time. The ARDOF, I believe it's five, six years that they have the ability, and I don't think the build-out is the same even, if I'm remembering correctly, whereas the Great Grant actually is much easier to get connected to. The ARDOF, it's a little fuzzy to me.
That's right. It's a six- or seven-year window, and then even with that, there's a percentage. So, I think you have to have 40% done in three years, and then six. And it's a federal program. It's big. It's meant to work everywhere, whereas the Great Group program is more targeted to North Carolina-type issues, so I think it works a little better. I'd also say with the Great Grant, our partner there is the Co-op, and the Co-op has a history of continuing to deliver in that area. In large part, they have a lot of the infrastructure already in place, because they provide electricity.
Got you. And then SB 547, generally speaking, allows county like ours to actually contract out and build our own fiber infrastructure and potentially lease that. Is that?
That's correct.
In short, what that would do? Okay.
Yep. We cannot become a service provider, but we would have the ability to construct and then lease or potentially sell the infrastructure, but we could never become, you know, Buncombe Internet, for example.
Okay. Thank you. Cool.
One final note I'd share with you, there are a couple examples across the state of local governments that are providing internet service, but those are very limited and tend to be because of their relationship historically as utility providers. One of the great examples is in Wilson, North Carolina, and their internet provider's Greenlight, which is a part of their old electric foundation, so.
All right, Tim. Thank you so much for the updates. Appreciate it. We know it's important to a lot of people, so thanks for tracking it, and we look forward to learning more as this, hopefully, this legislative environment is, gets us to a better place.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Cool. I did have, actually, I was thinking about the agenda for this evening. I did have one question about an item on the agenda for this evening. I don't know if there's someone in the room who can address it, but just wanted to ask the question and see. It is regarding, I think it's the last item on the agenda, it's regarding the TDA funding. So, is there someone who could speak to that? I just, I heard a couple of people had questions about it before the meeting, so I just wanted to see if someone could share a little bit of information about it.
Is that the budget amendment you're referencing?
Yeah. I mean, as I read it, it basically said that there was like, more revenue was, has either come in or was expected to come in than had been previously forecasted, and so, some action was needed. But I think there was a little bit of, we weren't clear about, why do we need to do something? Because I couldn't remember something like this happening, or us needing to vote on this before. So, what is the?
Similar to what we did last month with the schools, when we were expecting to get more sales tax, and we had to have an expenditure that we can cut the check to send to the schools. The same thing that we're having now. The same thing we're having with TDA. When we did our budget last year, because of the pandemic, we were underestimating what we would expect to receive, but we have seen an increase in revenues, basically coming from the short-term rentals, and they've had more revenue coming in. So, in order for us to send that money to TDA, we must have a budget to cut that check to send to TDA.
Okay. So, more money has, it has already come in. This isn't forecasted. It has arrived.
This is also forecasted to get us through June.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
This is also a forecast to get us through the end of fiscal year. So, we are projecting that we will receive, based on our trends, we expect to receive more money by June 30. So, we must amend the budget to send them that check between now and June 30. So, this is also a forecast through June 30. Yes, sir.
Do we know how much money has come in so far?
I do not, but we can have that answer by 5:00.
Okay. Great. I think that explains it, yeah. And if you could let us know how much is in now, and then the forecast amount? That'd be great. All right. Thank you. I think we've worked through all of the items on our agenda, so let's adjourn, and we'll reconvene at 5:00. Oh, I'm sorry.